Welcome to the September 24, 2024, 6:30 PM City Council Meeting. That is the right date, right? We do have a quorum, so I'll call this meeting to order. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? And the pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a breathing justice.
City Clerk, would you please read the rules to speak?
Yes, sir. Individuals wishing to speak on agenda items must complete a sign-up card prior to the item being introduced. Those wishing to speak on cause or judicial public hearings must complete a sign-up card and sign the oath. Sign-up and oath cards are available on the table. Individuals wishing to speak on non-agenda items may do so under petitions from the public present. This opportunity is offered twice in the meeting, and individuals may speak at either the first or second petitions, but not both. No sign-up card is required. Citizens shall not comment on any issue more than once during the meeting. All comments, except petitions and requests, must address the pending issues, and citizens will be given three minutes to speak. Citizens wishing to speak on the consent agenda must submit a sign-up card identifying the items of interest. Each speaker shall be limited to three minutes to speak on the entire consent agenda. All sign-up cards and exhibits being submitted to City Council shall be placed in the box on the table.
Thank you, City Clerk. Do I, can I get a motion to approve the minutes of the regular City Council meetings on August 27, 2024, 6:30 PM, and special City Council meeting on August 8, 2024?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Hold on a favor, say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Minutes are passed. City Manager.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. We are on Item 6A, which is the Community Redevelopment Agency. The term of Member-at-Large Greg Aker expires on 30 September 2024. Member Aker has expressed his willingness and desire to continue to serve on this board for another four years, with a term to expire on 30 September 2028.
Thank you very much. I will speak briefly and simply say that I can't think of anybody more outstanding on the CRA board than Dr. Aker. He has a business down there. I think he owns some buildings down there, and more importantly, he cares about down there greatly. And I would certainly be for having him put back on there. Gosh, I don't have anybody lit up over there. Anybody else want to add anything? Okay, any cards?
Stan Johnston.
Stan's back.
Yes, I am. I'm back for this. Is that the CRA is an important agency, and you're a member of it, and all of you are a member of it. And Mr. Mayor Diesel, he's also a member of the North Boulevard Parks and Recreation, which is considering right now, when they have time, is that what's going on in CRA area with Sandpoint Park? Because historically, what we have had happen is when we had a sewage spill in Sandpoint Park.
Stan's back.
When we had a sewage spill is what happened is that a number of people, including myself and others, requested for the city to turn off the fountains, and they made requests, for example, to the City Manager, and I made requests to City Council, and they didn't turn it off. So people were sprayed with sewage for months, for months. Sprayed with sewage for months. Cars, people, children, babies, so forth. So this issue is being considered by the North Boulevard Parks. It's been considered for some time, and it was considered by the PTEC, and it was taken to council, and the council just didn't go. So this is a serious matter, that the CRA has got some important issues to not spray people with sewage for months.
All right, thank you.
Any comments? Thank you.
Any other cards? Member Nelson?
Move to point Greg Aker as a Member-at-Large to the CRA for a four-year term.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call, vote.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
And very thankfully, Member Aker is back and will remain back on the CRA board. Thank you, Dr. Aker. City Manager.
Item 6B, which is the Resolution Number 172024, the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee Appointments. Staff is seeking approval of Resolution 172024 to reaffirm the service of existing AHOC members to appointment and to appoint one new member as follows. Reappoint the existing members William Gary, Cody Coles, Kayla Manning, Vice Mayor Joe Robinson, and a Principal Planner. Citizens are requesting an initial appointment of Jose Maneticon.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, I'm sitting on that board, and it is a wonderful thing to have our citizens in charge that has a motivation to ensure to the best that they can and make recommendations to the council about keeping affordable housing the best that we can on the top of the list. Of course, the word affordable is going to have to be redefined in that particular process, but it is exciting as the Chair of that board. It is exciting to have someone that is interested to be part of that.
Well, thank you for those words. It is very important, and the people on there take it very seriously, and I appreciate that. Anything else from the council? Call the card, please. Member Nelson?
I don't know if the, any of the applicants are here. I didn't know if you wanted to.
I don't think so.
Okay.
Are there, in case I missed it? I don't have, okay, I don't see any.
Okay. Then in that case, I would move to approve Resolution Number 17-2024, appointing the members to the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, that being William Gary, Cody Coles, Kayla Manning, Joe Robinson, the Principal Planner, and Joe Manticon.
Just for...
I probably butchered that.
Yeah, well, that's okay. We know who they are. We're very pleased with them all. City Attorney, does Member Robinson, Vice Mayor Robinson, vote on this as well? Okay, just double checking because I got running this. Okay, roll call vote.
Second.
Okay, I'm sorry. Motion and a second. Roll call vote.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Passed unanimously. Thank you all for serving on such an important board. It accomplishes so much. Thank you. Petitions and requests from the public, please. Step right up.
Stan Johnston, professional engineer, former engineer with the city of Titusville. I'm talking about the same subject I talked about for the last meeting before and the meeting before that, and that's SNJ Oaks. So my concern is the, the, the street known as Mockingbird Lane that's shown on, on the street maps, property appraisers, post offices and so forth. It has bordering it or serviced by it are, bordering it are six properties. And when you go, when I go to Mockingbird Lane, right there on the power pole, it says no trespassing. And I've been approached by the engineer of the SNJ Oaks, saying, "You are not allowed on this property. No one is allowed on this property except the owner and anybody that, anybody the owner allows." So in other words, we have a street that the city is also agreeing with the engineer that, that all these properties are landlocked, except for the property owner that owns the property where Mockingbird Lane is. This is pretty serious. And the, the plans have minimized the width of the road, so it's only one way, and it only services right now one property that has an easement to it. So the other properties, that is, four other properties have no access to it, even though there's gates and chain link fence and so forth, and there's houses that have absolutely no access to it. And I've asked, I'm asking you to look into it because it's a problem. They have no legal access according to this project and according to the city of Titusville. Brad Parrish, Peggy Bisaka, and I'd say even the, the attorney appears to me, because I've approached him a number of times, too. So these people, the Dashers, they've lived there, their families lived there, I believe, for over 70 years. And they're now saying their, their house there, they have no legal access. You got a posted sign, no trespassing. I'm upset about this because I used to own the property that had Mockingbird Lane on it. And the city, what the city did is they, they approached me and bought property from me for Elizabeth Avenue, and I accepted also this concrete apron for Mockingbird Lane. So I, I authorized access to all these people on Mockingbird Lane to have access to Mockingbird Lane. And the city now denies it. That's bad. No, it's not bad. It's horrible. It's horrible. I approached you for, for trying to solve it, and so far, you've done nothing. So she, okay.
This is your SNJ Oaks issue?
Yes, sir.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but isn't this you or the engineer in court on this? In the lawsuit on this?
I, the, the engineer of record, Fisher, is suing me for defamation of her character. And this time...
Because of basically the stand that you're taking about that she or he, I think it's a she, is incorrect on her, her numbers. And she said that's not the case. So quite honestly, what I'm getting at is, and I've done this before, is it's in court, and, and I think that nothing's going to go forward until the court has just made a decision.
Well, in the meantime, the, I'm not allowed on Mockingbird Lane, it appears.
And that's, that's a court thing. Clearly, it is. And that's really who you need to be talking to. And I think you...
And the street dead ends right now into a, right now is the...
And you know I've been down there with you.
The street leads, the street leads people into a oak tree and...
Right.
And a fence, which is illegal.
Well, you know why I know that? I was there with you.
Yes, sir.
Thanks, Stan.
Thank you very much. Thanks for your response. Okay.
I have a petition.
I'm sorry. Member Nelson?
I have a petition.
Of what?
I have a petition I request.
Oh, nothing for Stan.
Nothing for Stan. Sorry, Stan.
I know. Okay, here we go.
So I have to tell you, and I was hoping Sandy would be here tonight, but after the budget meeting, she came up to me, jumping up and down, doing a happy dance. And she had gone to Scobee Park with the zoo, and apparently, they had filmed this. And 60 feet off of Scobee Park, the end of Main Street, is seagrass all over.
Oh, oui. Wow, that is, that is big. Wow.
It's coming back.
That's fantastic.
So this is my request, and I've already talked to the City Manager about this, is that we do a press release. My understanding from Laura Lee is that the seagrass on the south end of the county, they're losing seagrass. And it appears like maybe we have gained seagrass. So I'd like to see the video at some point, and maybe during a presentation, or I doubt it's more than five minutes. I'd love to see the video, and I'd like to make sure we get a press release out, and the papers and the TV stations cover it.
Yeah, we would do well to have good news out there, that's for sure.
Yeah, I mean, we've worked on it.
I don't think anyone can argue about that. We, yeah.
Eight years. I mean, eight years we've been working like crazy on it, and it sounds like we're finally there.
I guess the first thing we'd want to do is to get a chance to see the video and then go from there, but I'm sure that's what we'd like to do. I mean, how do you not?
Well, I think you did the press release and let the reporters come up.
Yeah.
And put the video with it. But I'd like us to be able to see it.
Sure. City Manager, can we make a move on that? Thank you.
Do we need anything formal or just...
I think truly, I would think that you could just even say that to City Manager and recommend that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think it's cool.
I do, too.
And in addition to the press release, maybe we could put something in our quarterly magazine about it. I mean, that's a...
That's been a big deal for 10 years.
That's a win situation.
Before we got here, before any of us got here, that was a big deal.
I, I just remember us standing on the corner, talking about it and saying...
Absolutely.
This is something we really need to do, and before any of us were elected. And this is what we're going, work on.
That was a topic in 2016.
2016.
2016.
Eight years later, here we are.
That's when they, that's when they were pushing for the half-cent sales tax.
Yeah.
That was the same year.
Mm-hmm.
Very good. Thank you so much. Other petitions, requests? I pointed out, yeah, that's why I knew we had another one.
I'll try to read as fast as I can.
You're fine.
Good evening, everyone. As you know, this is my fifth meeting requesting your intervention and help in ending the excessive noise we have heard every day at 6:13 AM, coming from the inconsiderate renter-owner of the white 150 pickup truck in Gardendale with the modified exhaust system. Since I last requested your help, myself and another neighbor directly affected now are awakened at 5:13 AM, even earlier. For months, one of your senior officers in the Titusville Police Department told me that if the owner is being antagonistic and instigating by revving the engine on purpose, that is uncalled for. Unfortunately, after council meetings where I've spoken up, excuse me, requesting your help or spoken to officers, this behavior escalates. I have not always been told the truth by several members of the PD I have requested help from. Last meeting I attended, another senior officer told me they would call me, and I'm still waiting for this call. That was back in August. Chief Lyle spoke that last meeting I attended and implied that what code in the PD has told me does not, quote, "register," unquote, implying that I'm the village idiot. What they have told me makes no sense and only furthers my belief that the truck owner is connected, as he's boasted to me all along. For instance, a decibel reading was taken far away from the truck as possible. I have taken decibel readings in this room during intermission when the noise level measures almost as high as what the city allegedly came up with. And that officer, who allegedly took the reading for code enforcement, no longer works for code enforcement. I've read this to you before, and the chief failed to fully explain it when he said, "Things don't register with me." This is a Titusville code. It's not a Florida statute. I've read it to you before. I'll read it to you again. Section 13-103. Some sounds may be such that they are not measurable or may not exceed the limits, but they may be excessive, unnatural, and are a detriment to the public health...
Go ahead and try to finish that.
Thank you. They are a detriment to the public health, comfort, safety, welfare, and property of the residents. And my point is, even if that decibel reading is 62, which is what the officer said it was, 62 or 65, it's still a nuisance to the people that have to hear this truck fire up every single morning now at 5:13 AM.
5:13.
And the other section, 316.293, is a Florida code. And again, I've read this before. I'll read it one last...
Yeah, hold off. Don't, if you have read it before, you don't need to read it again because I'm going to have somebody, because every time you've come up here, we've given you somebody to give you an answer because quite honestly, we're not the ones to give you the answer. So we're going to get somebody else up here another time. But I would also say that I think it's quite an assumption to think that there's some kind of relation between the truck driver and the police, and I will just say that I, I doubt that. I disagree with that.
Well, he told me...
No, I'm not going to go in that.
"I'm friends with the cops," quote. That's what he said when I tried to talk to him the first time I met him. That's what he said.
Well, it doesn't make it true, does it?
Well, it makes you wonder that nobody wants to do anything.
This age in Facebook, I think if we read it, we believe it, so...
Well, Governor DeSantis told me to talk to you, Mr. Mayor, and here I am, and nobody seems to want to do anything.
And we've talked, we've talked a lot. We've talked about library issues. We've talked about a lot of stuff.
Well, that's not what we're talking about tonight.
No, we're not. But I'm just saying that to make it clear, I've talked to you about a lot of things, and I've gotten my best on all of them. I'm going to continue there. Go ahead and have a seat. I'm going to bring up the, Glenn, come on up, please.
Can I, can I say this?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Glenn, while you're coming up here, I want to say this to you. Okay. Old prosecutor, so in order to prove a criminal case, it's beyond reasonable doubt. And the jury instruction is, if you have any doubt whatsoever, that person is not guilty. It's a very high burden, so it makes it very hard to prove. There is an organization called Brevard County Legal Aid, and they may be able to help you, especially if it's you and your neighbor. They're asking to petition to enjoin, that's what they would call it, enjoin your neighbor from doing this act. And the court has the option of fines, jail, whatever, whatever remedies they come up with. So I would encourage you to talk to Brevard County Legal Aid and see if they're able to help you.
That may be a step I'm not familiar with, so that might be, that might be good insight. Okay, Glenn, give me an idea of what you know about this, what goes on, and tell me about the ordinance. Are the codes, as you know it?
Yes, sir. Mr. Ray did, did call our office back, I want to say February, about this vehicle. And I explained to him that motor vehicle noise is not a code issue per se. If it's a part on a property where it would run, like with a generator, manufacturing engines and those kind of things, that's what the code talks about. Motor vehicles, on the other hand, are governed by State Statute 316. And I was familiar with that, having been retired. And I explained to him that as a code officer, once a person starts that vehicle, we are not statutorily allowed to stop a person's right to free travel in a vehicle. We just don't have the authority to do that. And so I said, "But I'll tell you what. We'll take a help, and we'll try to see what we can get." We did send an officer out who took a code reading. And by the code, if you use a decimal, it has to be taken from the property where the complaint is. And that, that's what we did. And it did not register a violation. And then Mr. Ray said, talked about, it continuously bothered him, and I told him. I said, "That's a civil issue. That's, that's very similar to a tree that grows over a property line." Is, there's civil remedies for that. You need to take it to a small claims court. And just, just as Councilmember Nelson explained it way better than I ever could, but it's, and it's correct. It's, that's where this belongs. We can't substantiate a violation. There's no intent. He goes to work, he comes home. As a matter of fact, Mr. Ray left me a voicemail yesterday. I sent a code officer back out this morning at 5 o'clock. He stayed out there until 7:30, and there was no violation. And I told him, again, that we will try to help, but it's just really not our purview. If it's in a motor vehicle, it's covered by State Statutes 316, 320, and those are set by the Department of Highway Motor Safety. And be it, if we get it, to him, it is a violation. But unfortunately, it's a civil issue, and I, and I've told him, he needs to seek a civil remedy for that.
Thank you. And Member Nelson, thank you, because I don't think I had thought of that. Come up here. Go ahead. I, I may regret this, but...
Thanks for your input, Glenn.
You got it. Get a quick rebuttal, yeah. Go ahead.
But, but this is the last statute I was trying to read, 316.293. It reads, and I've read it to you folks before. "The measurement procedures may include adjustment factors to be applied to the noise limit for a measurement distance is of other than 50 feet from the center line of travel." That means that they took the reading as far away from the truck as they could on the western edge of my property, instead of taking it where the noise issue is. And when I say that the PD hasn't been truthful, twice I told them, "Why don't you go out in the morning with your decibel meter? I'll go with my decibel meter. And believe me, if you take it within a reasonable distance of this truck, you're going to see it's really noisy."
Okay, we're going to, we're going to be done with that because I, I feel like that they have been out there with their decibel meter. Glenn's been with his decibel meter. You've certainly been out there. I'm not saying you don't have an issue, but I'm saying that the angle to solve this seems to be more along with Member Nelson had just said. Member Nelson, and then we'll conclude.
Glenn, can you give him the phone number? It's 631-2500.
Glenn and I spoke today, in fact, and I told him that the guy's work schedule has changed. He's, he's firing it up at 5:13 in the morning, and he's not going to work six days a week anymore. So you don't think I'm trying to lie about that. His schedule has changed.
Okay, thank you. Glenn will get you that number. Anybody else? Petitions and requests? I see none. City Manager.
Onto Consent Agenda. Items A through F. City Council, do you have any questions on consent for staff?
I see none.
City Council, would you like to pull any items for further discussion?
I see none.
City Clerk, are there any cards for consent?
One card.
May I like to read the titles for the record?
Thank you.
Consent Agenda Item eight A, approve the collective bargaining agreement between the Laborers International Union of North America Public Employees Union six three zero and the City of Titusville. Consent Agenda Item eight B, approve the medical excess stop-loss insurance renewal with Sun Life for coverage period starting one October twenty twenty-four through thirty September twenty twenty-five. Consent Agenda Item eight C, approve landscape, construction, and maintenance memorandum of agreement and Resolution number eighteen, twenty twenty-four. Consent Agenda Item eight D, approve the budget amendment for FY twenty-four IT allocation adjustment. Consent Agenda Item eight E, approve the Second Amendment for Village Woods of La Sita Declaration of Coveted Conditions and Restrictions. Consent Agenda Item eight F, approve change order to the storage tank completion insurance policy renewal for FY twenty-five.
All right. Council, any comments? I see none. Call the card, please.
Stan Johnston on item C.
C. Pass. Member Nelson.
Move to approve Consent Agenda Items A through F. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Roll call, vote.
Mayor Diesel.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson.
Yes.
Member Stokel.
Yes.
Member Cole.
Yes.
Member Nelson.
Yes.
Passing unanimously. City manager.
Onto ordinances, first reading. This is Comprehensive Plan CPA number one dash twenty twenty-four, future land use, transportation, housing elements, downtown and gateways, objectives, policies, strategies, and the new citywide element. The city attorney will read these four ordinances for the record.
Ordinance number thirty-three, twenty twenty-four. An ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances by amending ordinance number sixty, nineteen eighty-eight, which adopted the comprehensive plan of the City of Titusville by adopting Comprehensive Plan Amendment one, twenty twenty-four, by adding a new citywide element, goal, objectives, and policies to address the regional economy, quality of life, place-based design, and employment, provided for severability, repeal of prior consistent ordinances, incorporation of the comprehensive plan, and an effective Ordinance number thirty-four, twenty twenty-four. An ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances by amending ordinance number sixty, nineteen eighty-eight, which adopted the comprehensive plan of the City of Titusville by adopting Comprehensive Plan Amendment one, twenty twenty-four, by amending the existing future land use element and transportation element, specifically amending objectives one point one, character land use districts, one point two redevelopment and adaptive reuse, one point ten downtown land use, one point twenty-one density and intensity land use criteria and associated policies and strategies of the future land use element, amending the policies and strategies of objective one point one of the transportation element, and adding objective one point nine and associated policies and strategies to the transportation element, provided for severability, repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances, incorporation in the comprehensive plan, and an effective date. Ordinance number thirty-five, twenty twenty-four. An ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances by amending ordinance number sixty, nineteen eighty-eight, which adopted the comprehensive plan of the City of Titusville by adopting Comprehensive Plan Amendment one, twenty twenty-four, to add a new gateway corridor objective, policies and strategies to encourage redevelopment on commercial corridors and strengthen policies related to natural resource protection, landscaping, and discourage urban sprawl by amending the existing future land use element objectives one point five and one point seven, and associated policies and strategies related to natural resources, greenhouse gases, and urban sprawl, amending the shoreline mixed use objective one point twelve, and associated policies and strategies, and adding a new gateway corridor objective one point twenty-four, and associated policies and strategies, provided for severability, repeal of prior consistent ordinances, incorporation in the comprehensive plan, and an effective date. Ordinance number thirty-six, twenty twenty-four. An ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances by amending ordinance number sixty, nineteen eighty-eight, which adopted the comprehensive plan of the City of Titusville by adopting Comprehensive Plan Amendment one, twenty twenty-four, by amending the existing housing element, specifically amending the objective one point one, one point two, one point nine, and one point ten, and subsequent policies and strategies related to the housing types, affordable housing, and sustainable building practices, provided for severability, repeal of prior consistent ordinances, incorporation of the comprehensive plan, and an effective date.
On eighteen September twenty twenty-four, the Planning and Zoning Commission acting as the local planning agency, recommended seven zero. The public hearing is scheduled to be held at the regular city council meeting on eight October twenty twenty-four, beginning at six thirty. Mr. Parrish is here to answer questions and anything that you may have for him.
You can summarize, I guess. You've certainly gone over this before.
You have seen these amendments before. Earlier this year, you directed us to transmit them to the state for review. We received no objections from the state agencies. We received three actual letters from the state agencies, Department of Commerce, Transportation, and Water Management District, no objections. So now we're bringing this before you for adoption. Just to summarize, we broke this out into four amendments, or four ordinances, rather. So if one passes and one doesn't pass, then it doesn't hold up one the other. The first one is a citywide element. It's a brand-new element that will be added. It's generalizing policies of the whole comprehensive plan and the changes that are being proposed. The second ordinance is the downtown, changes to the future land use element, primarily related to the downtown mixed-use category, and includes that downtown residential density pool and incentives, if you remember that. It also includes that same ordinance, that second ordinance, changes to the transportation element of the comprehensive plan. The third ordinance is also changing the future land use, but it introduces the gateway quarter land use category. If you remember that, that is the redevelopment land use objectives and policies that will be applied to the major commercial quarters. And then the fourth and last ordinance are changes that are being proposed to the housing element of the comprehensive plan. So again, if one passes, another one doesn't, they won't hold each other up. There are other parts of this whole project that will be brought back to the council at a later date. They're just being held up because they're still being worked on. One in particular is the amendment that is related to the urban mixed-use land use category. That'll come at a later date. And then we also have historic preservation policies that we're asked to bring back to you as well. And then environmental policies will be brought back at another time as well. So tonight, it's just transportation element, housing element, future land use element. I did include a large presentation that the consultant initially provided to us as far as their SWAT analysis, their strengths and weaknesses analysis of the city, and it helped inform the decisions as far as what types of policies to put into these ordinances. So with that, I'll try and answer any questions you have.
Is this time-sensitive? And it just kind of caught me that there's still others to come. Is it not important that they all go at the same time? Or is there a time issue here, or a compatibility time with this, or no?
I would, if you decide to... The reason why we broke it up, this particular amendment, into several ordinances, is so that you can make that decision if you decide to... One particular ordinance is a priority to decide on now, and maybe another one, maybe wait till later. I would recommend, if you do that, to consider the downtown mixed-use land use category, or that second ordinance, as a priority. And the reason is because of that density pool concept. If that is adopted, it'll foster a lot of opportunities in the downtown area, which currently are being restricted because of the way the code and the way the comprehensive plan is written. The second priority, I would recommend considering the gateway, because that will foster an ability to redevelop along of our commercial quarters. It's an extra tool that we can use to negotiate with developers along those major quarters to allow some of those properties that are already developed or derelict or blighted to be redeveloped easily. And then third would be the housing one, because that is... The policies that we are recommending amending in there will help with more housing choices in each of those areas along the commercial quarters and in our downtown. And then lastly, would be the citywide element. So that would be my recommended priority of consideration of these ordinances. But again, the first one would be the downtown.
Counsel, any questions, comments? I see none. Call cards, please.
No cards.
All right. This is the first reading. There'll be no vote or motion on that, so we move on. City manager.
Onto item ten B, Small Scale Amendment SSA number one dash twenty twenty-four, State Road four oh five and Singleton Avenue, PD North. This is quasi-judicial. The city attorney will read the procedures for quasi-judicial. Oh, you're not going to read it?
We're not voting. It's not a public hearing, so I won't read those procedures tonight.
Okay, so you can do what you want with that, but...
The city attorney will read the ordinances for the first time.
Ordinance number thirty-seven, twenty twenty-four. An ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances by amending ordinance number sixty, nineteen eighty-eight, which adopted the comprehensive plan of the City of Titusville by amending the future land use designation on land located at the northeast corner of the intersection of South Singleton Avenue and State Road four oh five South Street from low-density residential to conservation on five point zero one plus minus acres of property, commercial high-intensity to conservation on point four nine plus minus acres of property, and from conservation to low-density residential on point six three plus minus acres of property, and commercial high-intensity to low-density residential on nine point zero five plus minus acres of property, having parcel ID numbers twenty-two, thirty-five, zero five, zero zero, seven five zero, and twenty-two, thirty-five, zero five, zero zero, seven five two, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, and providing for an effective date. Ordinance number thirty-eight, twenty twenty-four. An ordinance, amending ordinance number five, nineteen ninety-three, of the City of Titusville, Florida, by amending the zoning map made a part of said ordinance by reference by changing the zoning classification and land located at the northeast corner of the intersection of South Singleton Avenue, State Road four oh five South Street, from the general use GU zoning district to the planned development PD zoning district on eight point eleven plus minus acres of property, the neighborhood commercial zoning district NC to the planned development PD zoning district on nine point five five plus minus acres of property, the open space recreation OR zoning district to the planned development PD zoning district on point six three plus minus acres of property, having parcel ID numbers twenty-two, thirty-five, zero five, zero zero, seven five zero, and twenty-two, thirty-five, zero five, zero zero, seven five two, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, and providing for an effective date.
On eighteen September twenty twenty-four, the Planning and Zoning Commission acting as the local planning agency, recommended approval of the land use ordinance four three. The members that opposed were concerned with the building height, losing commercial land use, drainage needs to be addressed, and the access to Highland Terrace should be replaced with a driveway directly to State Route four oh five, and recommended approval to rezone four three. The members that were opposed were concerned with the building height, losing commercial land use, drainage needs to be addressed, and the access to Highland Terrace should be replaced with a driveway directly to State Road four oh five. In addition, the PD master plan will cause traffic to impact a residential neighborhood per section thirty-three, five A two of the code. The public hearing is scheduled for the regular city council meeting on eight October twenty twenty-four at six thirty PM. Mr. Parrish is here to present and answer questions.
Go ahead, sir.
Mr. Mayor, just for the record, I do want to state that at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, they recommended approval four to three of the land use, but then also recommended approval of the rezoning four to three with additional conditions on top of what staff was recommending. So I just want to read what those are for the record. Member... Okay, so they made a motion to recommend approval of the rezoning ordinance with the staff-recommended conditions and allowing connectivity to Highland Terrace as proposed in the master plan. Also, the addition of the following conditions. One, increase the setback to seventy-two feet on the east boundary. Two, propose traffic calming measures with the submittal of the sketch plan. And three, a building height to be no greater than forty feet. With that, I'll try and answer any questions. I wasn't planning on giving a presentation on this one.
Counsel? Member Stokel?
Yep. So you said that... Was there discussion about or not having it connect to Highlands and just coming out on the four oh five? Is that even possible? You mentioned it, but I don't think it was one of the conditions that P and Z said, was it?
That was not the conditions that were mentioned.
Okay, so...
The concerns of the minority votes was that they thought that another driveway should be out to State Road four oh five. But that wasn't included in the majority vote, the motion that was actually approved.
Is it possible to not have a connection going into Highlands?
That is possible.
Okay. And then looking at... I'm on page three fifty-four. I really appreciate when you do the side-by-sides because that helps. It looks to me, for the land use, really what we're doing, we are... I see that we're switching out some conservation, but it looks to me like a majority of this is we're switching out the commercial high-intensity for low-density residential.
That's correct.
For the land use. Okay. And then for the zoning, we're switching out general use, which I thought that was interesting. I didn't realize general use can be with the land use.
Yes.
LDR. But so the GU is being switched to the PD there.
Correct.
And as well as the commercial. Okay. Yeah, I think my... What does the applicant feel about those conditions, the increasing the setback, the forty-foot max? And then what was the third one?
So the three P and Z recommended conditions, increase the setback to seventy-two feet. The applicant expressed some concerns about that.
Okay.
The second condition that P and Z recommended, propose traffic calming measures with the submittal of the sketch plan. They didn't have any objection to that.
Okay.
As far as I heard at the hearing. The building height, they also concurred with that.
They...
The applicant concurred with that.
They agreed with that?
Yeah.
They thought that was okay? Okay, any discussion from the applicant on what they feel about if we didn't have it going into Highlands? Like that wasn't an option? They would have to come out either on four oh five or Singleton?
I don't recall the applicant stating whether they were supporter or not of that.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Member Nelson.
I did have one question. When Kristi Anderson did the staff report, she indicated that we're going to try to save heritage trees. And my recollection is that heritage trees have to be preserved.
There is a process to remove a heritage tree, provided there's justification. And I think there's a max number. And I think, or I have to look at the code again, but I know there's a process for... So for example, there's up to a certain number you can take out. Past that, you have to go through a process, and the process has to go before the Development Review Committee. So it has to be justified through them.
Okay. Okay.
Anything?
That's based on criteria in the code. So each of those requests to remove that. There's a criterion in the code that addresses that.
Very good. Anything else from counsel? Call the cards, please.
We have two cards. First one is Vicki Conklin.
Vicki Conklin, twenty-nine twenty, Royal Oak Drive, Titusville. First off, I wanted to thank Brad again. I thanked him and P and Z, but it was a lot of information about this project that they I think really put together very well.
Agreed.
Just want to compliment him in public as well. I'm not sure why the... A lot of the residents here, I found it confusing that the public hearing is actually set for this on the day that it's the second reading. I thought the public hearing was set on the day was the first reading. Is that...
Well, I think it's kind of somatic.
Did I not misunderstand?
Sometimes, depending on the project, there may be two public hearings where you'd have a first public hearing and a second. But no, if there's only one public hearing in this case, this is just the first reading of the titles of the ordinance, and the public hearing will take place at the second reading and the vote.
Okay. Okay. I would encourage you not to extend the Highland Terrace. I think it's invasive to the established homes that have been there, as Councilman Stokel has said. They've been there since the sixties, and they don't really want this invasiveness in their neighborhood. Needs to be blocked off. Also, it seems that the fifty-foot height was a real concern. If they get approved for the fifty feet, they'll build fifty feet, and that's higher than the tree canopy. So I think that the optics of driving along on a major road, we've got a collector, we've got a material, and the optics of having these townhomes on both sides of that, it's kind of like going to be a townhome tunnel on four oh five. I'm not sure. I think that is the appearance that we want for our future growth. But the other thing is that I think we need to obey the comprehensive plan. I know I sound like a broken record with that. We're stewards of the com-plan, and eliminating that commercial is a big part of this project for this side, not for the south, but for the north. So by eliminating the commercial, we're diminishing further the opportunity to have commercial at the intersection of a material and collector. That seems to be a really high visible area. Why do we want homes on that high visible area? And I don't think we should be getting rid of our commercial. That's it. Thank you.
Good. Thank you very much.
Next card.
Last card is Mary Sparr.
There's Mary. Hi, Mary. Been a while. Yeah, I haven't heard you much. Mary's got handouts. Mary always has handouts. All right, Mary. Name an address for the record, but you know the routine.
Mary Sparr, eight-twenty-five Glickens Cove Court, Cocoa. You were just given a copy of page three hundred and seventeen of your agenda packet, which is a site plan for PD North. I've outlined in red a point-nine-one-acre parcel that applicant owned, but did not include in PD North.
Yeah, I saw that.
And in blue, I wrote WL-one, that is wetland one, which extends out from the project boundary into the point-nine-one-acre triangular-shaped parcel and covers almost all of this parcel. I've been reviewing proposed projects with wetlands, five acres and more, in size for a couple of years, and we're noticing some confusion and loopholes in your comprehensive plan language. Now, PD North reveals another loophole. An applicant can just chop off a little piece of very large wetland on property he owns and just decide not to include it in the project. In the process, he creates a basically undevelopable wetlands parcel, such as that point-nine-one-acre parcel outlined in red. And could someone actually manage to develop a basically undevelopable wetlands parcel? Maybe, if they cried property rights loud enough. Of course, no one has cried property rights yet. In this case, the applicant owns about ten-point-three acres of wetland one, but he's only including nine-point-four acres. He is severing a little point-nine-one-acre triangle-shaped parcel, almost all of which is part of wetland one, from the thirty-nine-plus contiguous acres he owns on the north. Now, the applicant could actually agree to change his boundaries and include the little triangle parcel, but you've got to ask him to include the point-nine-acre triangle parcel. If you don't get the PD North boundary fixed, you're setting a very bad precedent affecting your conservation land. That conservation land includes the extensive and extremely important swath of forested wetlands that runs north to south, and you've heard about that swath of wetlands many times.
How much time, you need another minute? Another minute? Okay, hold on, hold on, do another minute, thank you. We always want to give our folks plenty of time.
Thank you. This extensive forested wetland system prevents flooding and protects the water quality of the Indian River Lagoon. In conclusion, we have a very bad situation to deal with, but it can be fixed. Please ask the applicant to adjust the project boundaries to include the little triangle parcel. Thank you.
Mary, every time you talk, whether it's about trees or whatever it may have been, you always try to come up with a win-win. Just, when I'm long gone from here, I'll always remember that you tried to, there's got to be a way to do it, and I appreciate the way you just presented that, so thank you for getting us to think about it.
Thank you, I actually think this could be doable if you ask.
I appreciate that, thank you very much.
Can I ask a question?
Uh, I'm sorry, I didn't look over there, Member Stokel.
Mary, I'm not, I'm not sure what you're asking, so I see, like, on the maps here, it's still staying conservation.
Okay.
So what, are you, yeah, I'm just not sure what you're wanting.
Okay, yeah, but see, what happens is that it stays conservation, the point-nine-one-acre parcel, because it's not included in the project. Now, the wetlands lines have, that the environmental consultant for the applicant has given the city indicate that there's more conservation land than previously thought. In fact, the whole point-nine-one parcel is almost all covered with wetlands. So what this means, according to the future land use element, is the uses are, for conservation land, are limited to basically one residential unit per five acres. Well, there isn't five acres there. And so, if somebody tries to buy this parcel or develop on it, they have a problem. They've got to cry loud, strong, property rights, and that's, that, it puts staff in quite the bad position for having to determine how much rights they have. And this, this is a flaw in, in the coordination of the future land element policies with the conservation.
You're talking about the little piece that would still stay commercial high-intensity, that's what you, you don't want that, if, if the rest of it is getting changed to comm, to LDR, you would like that little corner piece to be switched, is that what you're talking about?
I would like.
Brad, do you know what, like, I'm zooming in on the map on three fifty-four, and I see there is that little triangle piece, some of it's LDR and some of it is, uh, commercial high-intensity. Is that what she's talking about?
Yes, it's on the east side of Singleton.
Yeah, so that little segment, so you are request, you don't know why it's like that, you would like it to.
No, I don't, because the reason I'm saying that is, the applicant, when they asked the environmental consultant to evaluate their properties, they asked for that parcel to be part of, the little triangle parcel to be part of the evaluation as well.
Okay.
And to top it off, on page four hundred and ten of your agenda packet, you can see that their original concept plan, which is called Concept Plan A, and it's included in the traffic study. It shows that parcel included in the boundary of PD North. So I have no idea why it's taken out, and I'm just hoping, since they considered it at one time, that they will decide to include it now as well, because it could certainly be used to help remediate the flooding problem in that area, or in, or alternatively, to help qualify the applicant for the incentives in the tree ordinance, which, I would save the applicant a lot of money.
Okay, so you, you're, if I'm hearing you correctly, you think that that should be conservation, just like.
Well, I'm thinking that it should be what the environmental study and the applicant would recommend.
Okay.
We have criteria, the conservation is gonna be wetlands five acres and greater, and this is obviously a part of a wetland that is greater than five acres. However, as far as what they do with the, you know, commercial or low-density residential, I would think they would follow the pattern that they are currently trying to promote.
It definitely is a very small piece of commercial.
You know, you know, zero in on their plans.
No, I hear you, I mean, I.
I just don't want a problem for Titusville creating a really bad precedent.
Yeah, thank you.
Member Nelson?
And I have a question. So if we have point-nine-one acres, that's less than the five acres, could somebody come in, mitigate that, fill that in, and use it?
They would first have to amend the comprehensive plan.
Okay.
That is possible.
Okay. Okay, that may be why they thought about doing that.
I have no idea, but, but that's.
That would be my concern. That would be my concern.
I thought that's what you were saying in your email a little bit, too.
Well, the thing about it is, you know, we've already noticed that a property that is adjacent to this one, actually PD South, tried to use the property rights argument to get some additional acreage for apartments. And at the time, I remember that Member Robinson very clearly talked about the five-acre rule.
Yeah.
And I really appreciated that.
He's a five-acre rule expert.
Yeah.
Did a great job sticking to the, sticking to the rule.
All right, thank you so very much. Counsel, anything else on that? Cards? All right, again, first reading, city manager. We're on item ten C, which is small-scale amendment, application number two-dash-twenty-twenty-four, State Road four oh five and Singleton Avenue, PD South. This is the first reading, the city attorney will read ordinances number thirty-nine, twenty-twenty-four, and forty, twenty-twenty-four.
Ordinance number thirty-nine, twenty-twenty-four, an ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances by amending ordinance number sixty, nineteen-eighty-eight, which adopted the comprehensive plan of the City of Titusville by amending the future land use designation on land located at the southeast corner of the intersection of South Singleton Avenue, State Road four oh five, South Street, from low-density residential to conservation on eleven-point-two-five-plus-minus acres of property, from conservation to low-density residential on point-four-four-plus-minus acres of property, having parcel ID numbers twenty-two, thirty-five, zero-eight, zero-zero-one, twenty-two, thirty-five, zero-five, zero-zero-seven-five-two, twenty-two, thirty-five, zero-five, zero-zero-seven-five-eight, twenty-two, thirty-five, zero-five, zero-zero-seven-five-nine, and twenty-two, thirty-five, zero-five, zero-zero-seven-six-zero, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, and providing for an effective date. Ordinance number forty, twenty-twenty-four, an ordinance, amending ordinance number five, nineteen-ninety-three, the City of Titusville, Florida, by amending the zoning map made a part of said ordinance by reference by changing the zoning classification on land located at the southeast corner of the intersection of South Singleton Avenue and State Road four oh five, South Street, from the general use GU zoning district to the planned development PD zoning district on twenty-seven-point-nine-nine-plus-minus acres of property, and from the open space recreation OR zoning district to the planned development PD zoning district on point-four-four-plus-minus acres of property, having parcel ID numbers twenty-two, thirty-five, zero-eight, zero-zero-one, twenty-two, thirty-five, zero-zero, I'm sorry, twenty-two, thirty-five, zero-five, zero-zero-seven-five-two, twenty-two, thirty-five, zero-five, zero-zero-seven-five-eight, twenty-two, thirty-five, zero-five, zero-zero-seven-five-nine, and twenty-two, thirty-five, zero-five, zero-zero-seven-six-zero, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, and providing for an effective date.
On September eighteenth, twenty-twenty-four, the Planning and Zoning Commission, acting as the local planning agency, recommended approval to the land use ordinance seven-zero, and recommended approval to the rezone of four-three. The members that opposed were concerned about flooding, specifically the surrounding development pressures are increasingly flooding issues in the area. The members that were opposed were also concerned about the proposed residential density, one member was also concerned about low water pressure. The public hearing is scheduled for the regular city council meeting on eight October twenty-twenty-four at six-thirty. Mr. Parrish is here to present and answer questions for you. Ms. Parrish.
On this agenda, I'd like to just clarify for the record, Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation, again, as stated, the land use amendment was approved unanimously, or recommended for approval unanimously by the Planning and Zoning Commission, but on the rezoning ordinance, they recommended approval four-to-three with conditions, which were not part of the, I didn't put on the cover here, so just for the record, I'm just going to read what those are. They approved a motion to recommend approval of the rezoning ordinance with staff recommendations and staff's conditions, also the addition of the following conditions: one, that building height be no greater than forty feet, and two, the, they allow the Forest Hills Baptist Church to access the proposed driveway at the Singleton Avenue intersection if possible. This project has two proposed driveways, one of them going to that intersection of Singleton and State Road four oh five, and the representative of the Forest Hills Baptist Church asked if this project could be approved with the ability to, for that property, the church to access their proposed driveway, so they can use that intersection to get in and out of their property safely. With that, I'll try and answer your questions here.
Member Nelson?
Did the applicant have any problems with the one condition for the church using the driveway?
I, I do not believe they had an objection to that, but again, that would have to be determined at site review, however that can be resolved if possible, and that's why it's stated as not, they have to work with them, basically, is what they agreed to. Now, the applicant's here to answer that question.
Oh, okay. Who's the applicant?
He will be. Yeah, we'll get them up here. Any other thing from counsel? And applicant, we will certainly get you up here if you don't have a card. Call the cards? Applicant, can you come up? Nothing else, it gives us a chance to get a better feel for what you guys got going, just a question here.
I'm Anna Long, I'm an attorney with the law firm of Teen Mead, eight-four-four-one Yerle Road, Melbourne, Florida. The applicant agreed to all of the conditions in both the north and the south that were applied by the P and C members. Do you want me to go over all of them, or just the last one you asked about?
No, I was just curious about the last one, because I go down that road a lot, and the entrance to the church is very close to that intersection.
It is.
And I was like, yeah, now it's fine, ten years from now.
Staff indicated we're fine with it as long as during the site plan, staff's fine with it, so we're good.
Great, thank you.
Anything else we have with applicant? No, first thing I'll say is it's very rare we get somebody to say we agree with all, and so, that's, that's kind of nice.
I do have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
Did you, did you guys have any comments on the one citizen concern about the triangle piece?
Sure.
And that still?
It wasn't included because they didn't own the property at the time.
Okay.
And we have no problem including it.
You'd, okay, perfect, thank you.
Wow, that's a good answer. All right, and no cards, correct? I can't say, Member Nelson, we don't have a motion, city manager. Onto item twelve A, which is code enforcement lien reduction request for a property located at four-zero-four-five, Coquena Avenue. Staff is recommending that you approve the special magistrate's recommendation for a code enforcement lien reduction of the daily fine from seventy-three thousand to five hundred dollars plus three hundred and eighty-four dollars and twenty-four cents, in cost for a total amount of eight hundred and eighty-four dollars and twenty-four cents, payable to the City of Titusville within ninety days. This property is located at four-zero-four-five, Coquena Avenue, and is homesteaded to the resident of Ms. Cynthia Casprek. Glenn's here to answer questions that you may have on this magistrate's recommendation. Anything you want to say, Glenn, first of all?
Yes, thank you. Ms. Casprek, they come in front of the magistrate, as you saw, I put pictures of before and after, they don't really do that property justice with what she's done there. She initially had applied for the amnesty program, but got hung up with some contractor issues, and then came forward, it is a homesteaded property, it is her home now, and staff does support it.
Thank you very much. Counsel, any questions? Is the person here?
Yes, sir, Ms. Casprek's here.
Well, come on up anyway, I don't know that we're going to have any questions or anything like that, if anything you want to say, sounds like a.
If anything you wanna say, sounds like a cordial and collaborative agreement has come about. So, anything you wanna add to what Glenn said there, or is everything, you agree with the agreement?
I, I do. I'm sorry it's taken me so long to get to this, but I think I did a great job on the house and to the community and everything.
I would say, from what we've seen, we'd agree, I'd agree. You don't say we up here very often, so I agree.
I mean, that's my retirement home, my forever home.
So, well, I appreciate that, and Glenn, I appreciate your words. And I don't think we're needing anything else, and we'll go from here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm, we have any cards on that other than that? Okay, Member Nelson? Yeah, we got a few numbers there.
Move to approve the special magistrate recommendation for code enforcement lien reduction to $500 plus $384. I gotta finish it.
Well, yeah, but it's.
Yeah, but you don't have your light on.
$884.24 payable to the City of Titusville within 90 days. Now you go.
I have a motion from Member Nelson, a second for Vice Mayor. Roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Vice Mayor.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Member Nelson? Mayor Diesel?
Yes, happily, yes. Thank you, guys. Appreciate that. That's awesome. Good job. Glenn, good job. Thank you. City Manager?
Onto Mayor, Council, and City Managers' reports.
We'll start with Member Cole. Member Nelson?
Member Nelson was reading the package about the small-scale amendment, and I did not realize that we did not have a buffer zone around wetlands. Did you guys notice that? I was sort of like, hmm, so.
I don't think we ever talked about having a buffer zone around wetlands, but you would almost think that there's a buffer zone around anything like that, so.
Well, I sort of thought, there's gotta be a buffer zone around the wetlands, because otherwise you're impacting the wetlands. I mean, eventually, it would seem like they'd be gone. So, I was sort of thinking, maybe we should do advisability to at least have planning look at it and see if other areas, I was hoping I could Brad here, but he ran, and see if that's something we need to look at. I don't have an answer.
Member Stokel, what do you think?
I'm always for advisability on looking at things.
Yeah, I don't think that can hurt.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think that advisability, that's truly something I really thought about with the.
I didn't think about it.
Member Cole?
But if it's on private property, does that mean we have to require the property owner to put up a buffer?
I think that might be part of the advisability, but I think that's certainly gotta be part of the equation.
Well, I would think that it would really apply to developments coming in.
To make sure to have a buffer.
To make sure they have a buffer.
Yes, that's kind of where.
Because these people had a buffer around the wetlands, which is what really made me think about it. And I was like, wait a minute.
Do we need to vote on that, or can we just have?
So what we'll need is advisability to bring an agenda item back.
And be a vote.
That would be my motion.
So you want an agenda item to address advisability to do buffers around wetlands?
Exactly.
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good motion.
And is this, this is in new development, right?
New development.
Okay.
Well, then you can, with an advisability, we can play off of when they bring it back.
Yeah.
Or you all can play off of when they bring it back. So, Member Nelson has a motion, and Member Stokel has a second. Can we do an all in favor here? All in favor?
Yes.
Opposed? It passes. We'd like an advisement on that. Thank you very much. Anything else? That was big for that kind of thing. I, a couple of cool things. As my meetings and weeks wind down, I want to get a couple of things done, and it worked out perfectly. Got invited to a surprise party for Willie Taylor. His wife does those greatly. And so I decided I wanted to do a mayor's proclamation for him at the event. And Willie and I, being very similar, I think we both got very teary-eyed during this, but basically thanked Willie from the mayor's proclamation for what he's meant in the community, what he's meant for our city. He's a guy, and they kind of put this in the proclamation, that he gives hope to the hopeless and a smile to the, and happiness to the sad. That's, that's what he does. And we're blessed to have him as a Titusville police officer on top of that. But I didn't really get into that as much as I did what he does, and quite honestly, to walk in, and then he had his group that particular night, I think it was a Monday night, he had like 40 kids and some adults in there working, you know, working out. So that was really, really nice. I'm glad I got to get that done. Then I got invited to the IRC Academy, which is a church, which is a school at IRC. Used to be Methodist Church, now it's Indian River Church. And just a couple of things always crack me up when I get to go. I presented them all with certificates of appreciation, because they were doing a study on appreciation of city workers. And I thanked them for that, but then I get the questions, and, you know, like, one of them is, "Did you get here in your helicopter?" I'm telling you, they, and I tell them, they think the mayor is a lot more important than he is sometimes. "Do you, do you live in a mansion?" And the one I always get, "Wow, you're lucky. You own all the buildings in the city." I'm like, what? So anyway, that was cute. It was a great event, and I was so glad to do it. And those are the kind of things that I really will miss when this all comes to an end, being able to shed a little light on those that deserve and maybe need some light. So I was glad to do those two things. Vice Mayor?
Yes, I, I attended, I am a, I sat on the board for the Coalition of Care for Brevard County, and I attended a early morning meeting last Friday morning and talking about the House Bill 1365. And it was a lot of things that, and I know Amber presented to us, I think it was our last meeting, a lot of things that brought, I sat at a table or in a group with two officers from Cocoa Police Department and a representative, one of our local sheriffs as well. Great gentleman, and they schooled me, you know, and I've been in the housing business on all of the, the financial concerns that, that I believe that has not been taken into consideration to implement some of those things that are going to be involved with House Bill 1365. Just to just clue you in, is that if taking an individual in custody and, and, for the like of a better word, booking them and processing them through the system, that is a costly process. And I don't think that that has been taken into consideration, because the city will have to pick up a lot of that cost. And then if they process them through, it's no guarantee that the courts are going to, the judges are going to pick in and say, "We don't even, too many of them, we don't wanna deal with it." There's a lot of things, so, and then I know that the police, our local police department has taken some proactive things on, on helping the individuals that are homeless in the homeless camps. And I give them a Bravo Zulu for that. But, but keep it up, because it's a lot of things that's gonna be involved with that. It still hasn't been uncovered. It was several city managers that was there and their staffs talking about the things that they are concerned about. It was county staff there. A very, very good meeting, and, and I will, I will continue to be on that board. But it's a lot of things to, that, that are being brought out as we study the whole process of what the state in their legislation has done and the burden that they are putting on the cities. So, you know, keep on doing Titusville Police Department, what you're doing. You, you trying to stay ahead of a big monster that is coming that prob, but right now, I think that many of the cities are kind of putting it on the back burner. They're not doing what we're doing up here. So just, again, Bravo Zulu, job done. And I'll, it is a big monster that, that is gonna rear its head, so we have to be prepared.
And the guy that's doing it sits right there, so I.
Yeah, he, I could tell he's like, okay. All right, thank you, sir. Member Stokel?
Just to give you guys a brief update on my position with the Florida League of Cities Board. We had a meeting this past weekend. I think I mentioned it to you, but if you weren't aware, the Cocoa Mayor, Mayor Blake, is the current president of the Florida League of Cities, which is phenomenal. He's doing a great job. We did a lot of routine things, just going over our budget, finances, goals for the year. But the highlights are, one, we are starting the process for our advocacy and what issues Tallahassee may start to work on. Not too much just yet, because I think they're waiting until after the election. But session, I think, starts sometime in March this year. So as those bills start to get filed and committee weeks happen, we will be monitoring and trying to stay proactive. Also, I signed up to join the Training and Educational Committee, which is a new committee, where, which I'm so happy about this, because this is something I've been trying to push for. They're trying to see what can they do for those that don't really attend some of their events? Like, how can we better support cities through educational resources, things on our website, trainings, webinars, if there's something that the cities need help with, researching certain things? So if you guys have any ideas of things that you wish, you're like, man, I wish we could get resources from the state level on best practices for certain things, please let me know, because that's what we're trying to do and work on right now. Lastly, I had mentioned this before, this is probably one of the coolest things. Part of what we're doing is partnering with NASA, working on that concrete substitute using recycled glass and plastic, which, if you know, recycling's a huge issue right now, which I think we, we don't even, we lose money on our recycling. We're trying to do better for the environment, and it's costing us. But I think they said in the presentation, this would be seven times more strong than concrete, but also better for the environment. So they're making progress there, and I'm just, I'm super excited about that, that they, another branch that the league is trying to do to help, again, municipalities, because that could be something that we can use potentially for infrastructure projects. So that is my update.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question for.
You're too late.
Oh.
Yeah, your turn.
My question is for the young lady at the end down there. Have the, the League of Cities, have they come down with anything particularly about what Vice Mayor was talking about? The, what other cities are doing as far as the homeless population?
Right. Not that I'm aware of just yet, but I can certainly ask and check in with them to see. Because that's something they do, is they'll try to send out information to cities. It depends on cities responding. But yeah, that's something we're working on. But I will, I'll keep you posted to see what we can find out.
Go ahead.
Yes, it was at the, in, in attending that meeting, because I do, I do sit on the board and sit there and learn from Sarah. And there were several members that of the Space Coast League of Cities that were there, had input, and also the Coalition of Care has presented to the League of Cities and as Sarah state, they, we at that, at part, is trying to stay abreast of all of that as well.
Member Nelson?
Sarah, when you get information on the concrete substance?
Yep.
Can you pass it on to us?
Yes.
That's really interesting.
Yeah, I might have something in my box.
Okay.
I might have something in my box downstairs, actually, because I had the presentations forwarded to me, so, yeah.
That just sounds absolutely cool.
Oh, it was, it was the coolest presentation to sit through, because like, we've, they've been working on it for some time now, just to see it going through the process of getting a patent, working out the agreement with NASA, and it's something, I don't know, I'm just really excited about it, from financial, from helping the environment, the solving the recycling issue, costs, there's, yeah. It just could be a great thing.
Are they planning on bonding these things together with epoxy or something?
They even had, they had samples, not at this fast meeting, but the other one, yeah, to show us what it looks like. And they even were talking about like, okay, what about contaminated, you know, plastics and glass? And they were seeing, they're doing in their research and design portion, trying to see, okay, what if we put like those that might be a little bit contaminated, like, sandwich it in? And then the cleaner stuff on the outside, what does that mean? Is, like, how is it impacting the environment? It's really cool. Super cool. Yeah.
And speaking of Tallahassee, you mentioned it reminded me that we need to have our thoughts and prayers with the people in the Panhandle, Tallahassee area, and wherever this thing ends up going exactly, because it could be a category three. I will say, as it's popped up when I was looking at it, that we're just, it's while we were here, I guess, we got put on the tropical storm watch list and are on the emergency list as well now of 61 counties out of 67. So that's just about all of us. So, City Manager, I'm sure will comment a little bit. He was in an EOC meeting today and staying on top of all this. So with that, City Manager?
Yeah, I'd like to go ahead and give you a tropical storm, Helen, update. Helen is expected to hit our area sometime early Thursday morning, which is the 26th through mid-morning. It's a fast-moving storm. When it gets into the Gulf, it's expected to reach 230 miles from the center of the storm, which will definitely cover us. The impacts in our area are expected to be tropical winds ranging between 25 sustained and gusts between 40 and 60 miles an hour. Rainfall estimates are expected to be, in our area, two to four inches, with six being on the high end. And being that it'll be a fast-moving storm and a lot of rain really quick, local street flooding and yard flooding is possible. Brevard County Schools is anticipating their announcement tomorrow, on Wednesday, the 25th, at noon, regarding Thursday's activities. The EOC anticipates tropical storm watch right now, and we will be under a tropical storm warning most likely tomorrow morning. City Titusville opened sandbags on Singleton this morning for people to fill their own sandbags. We will have staff out there tomorrow morning, and we will run through 5:00 PM. We left some sandbags out this evening, if anybody still needs sandbagging tonight. The city will continue normal operations at this time on Thursday. We may alter our solid waste operations. We'll announce that tomorrow. If we do, the solid waste that was scheduled for Thursday will be changed to Saturday, and we anticipate continuing with our Friday operations. And I will continue to provide counsel the update, the next update scheduled for tomorrow at 4 o'clock, if not sooner. If, as the storm winds up kicking up quicker, we will probably have a noon meeting at the OC. Subject to questions.
Very good. Thank you. City Attorney? Counsel? Should I say dismissed? If I hold, if I hold this for a while, will you stand there? Meeting adjourned. Thank you, guys, very much. Appreciate you, guys. Thank you.